The following is a local resident producer's program. The program content is the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Media Services, the City of Oshkosh, or Time Warner Cable.
School Superintendent for the Oshkosh Area School District, Betty Lang. You've been on here a couple of times in the past and we're always happy to have you. So, thanks for being here tonight. And we're only going to talk to you for a half an hour. You've got a meeting you have to get to. So, we will cut you loose. We won't detain you.
Thank you.
Detain, that's a word you guys use in school districts.
Yes, yes.
Anyway, first thing we want to talk about is the school closures.
Yes.
Now, the school board has voted to close Green Meadow and Lincoln Schools with the start of this school year.
Yes.
Other than shows like this and the newspaper, how have you been communicating this to folks?
We've actually sent out letters, personal letters, to all the families that were affected. In some cases, we sent them with Green Meadow. Green Meadow and Lakeside was a two-campus school, so we've also sent letters to the Lakeside parents to keep them apprised that Lakeside is a K- through 3 school. So, those children would eventually be going to Green Meadow. So, that's, we've done that. We've had two, held two meetings. The first meeting was kind of the big-picture overview. Why are we even where we are? Why are we thinking of closing schools? And then the second meeting was an opportunity for all the parents to come with their children to come. And we had the meeting at Tipler. The largest crowd that came was the Green Meadow families. And then they were able to take a tour of Tipler, see the rooms. And we also had the principals available. The Tipler principal, along with the principal from Washington, and Reed, and Merrill. As Lincoln School closed, then those were the three receiving schools. So, parents got a chance to then talk to the principal. And that was, I think that helped everybody. You know, let, give me the details. What do I need to be ready for the first day of school? And I think that helped people move forward. And this week, Cheryl, is actually our registration week. So, families are coming into the buildings and getting registered. And things seem to be rolling along. And questions are being answered, which is the most important.
Right. And of course, this is going to air probably the week after registration.
Yes.
Hopefully, right around the time that school starts.
Wonderful.
I'm thinking it'll probably air like the week before school starts. So, I'm sure that a lot of people, especially the parents who are affected by this, know this already. But how many students have been affected by these two closures?
There were 73, between 73 and 76 students at Green Meadow. People were still deciding whether they were going to stay enrolled at Green Meadow or go to parochial or homeschool. So, we'll say about 76 at Green Meadow. And we only had 53 students left at Lincoln. We already had taken the 4th and 5th graders and moved them to other schools because their, the balance of special education to regular education was very off-center. So, for 4th and 5th graders, they had already been moved earlier in the spring. So, it's a total of 129 students. And of course, that doesn't necessarily mean 129 families, because we have siblings that were affected. But that's, those are the numbers of students we were dealing with.
Okay. And, you know, as far as those students now, how, how much further will they have to travel to get to their schools? How much time additionally will they be spending on buses if they travel by bus? That kind of thing?
We, Green Meadow is probably the most greatly affected for busing. And there is a shuttle system that will pick up the Green Meadow students and bring them to Lakeside where they'll transfer buses and then come into, to the city, I guess, into Tipler. And that's been a system we've had before. What we had before was a, a Green Meadow area would be picked up and come into Green Meadow. Then the young students, the K- through 3 students, would get on a shuttle and go to Lakeside. So, the children are pretty comfortable with the shuttle. They've done it before. So, it's under an hour. And actually, in most cases, it's around 50 minutes that they'll be on the bus, which is about what they were on the bus before. Our bus company, Cobason, has been very good about restructuring routes and trying to figure out how to make it the best for children. And the other thing we were able to do is our Boys and Girls Club offers a before-and-after school program at Lakeside for the children. And so, as the children leave Tipler, Green Meadow children leave Tipler, that bus will go to Lakeside, give those 4th and 5th graders an opportunity to get off there. And that way, parents will have a one-stop in order to pick up their children after school, after work. So, I think we've worked out some of the bugs. It's, it was very difficult, Cheryl. It's very difficult to close a school. It's difficult for the families, even though I have, families will come up and say, you know, I understand you have to do it. But it was very difficult. So, that's, I really appreciate the support of the community and the families and students who have adjusted. I mean, they've worked very hard and they've adjusted. And they're trying to make the best of, you know, kind of a difficult situation.
Sure. Well, and you know, it seemed like of the various things that the board was considering, this was probably the one that was most palatable to parents, you know?
Yeah. And it, they were, the board, you know, with the whole, this whole timeline of events, on May 22nd, or the board meeting in May, the board cut $2.2 million, thinking the budget was balanced and that we were set to go. But with the signing of the governor's budget at the end of June, some of the things on the May list that didn't get cut, and those schools were on there, got brought forward again, along with many, many more things. And then another $2.3 million was cut, along with $760,000, because of the governor not being able to meet the promise of the per pupil amount. So, this was a year like, I've never experienced a year like this, Cheryl. And I don't know if anyone in education has.
And you know what? It may not get any easier.
Well, that's what we're understanding, because this is a two-year biennium. The good news is, we know the rules right now. Where we were finding the rules at the end of June, you know, we know them now. So, our board is determined to start, in September, to start the process for the 10-11 budget. So that if there are more school closures, if there are boundary line adjustments, which they're very well maybe, we're getting it out there on the table early. So, people have a chance to weigh in and make those changes. Because the $5 million or so that was reduced from the budget, it was, there were deep cuts. There are class sizes in some cases that are going up. There are courses that are not being offered. I mean, it did affect students in classrooms, along with staffing, parent professionals, custodians, clerical, everyone, administrators. It just affected the entire district.
Sure. So, what's going to happen with these two schools? I mean, Lincoln is very close, of course, to the university. Is there any possibility of doing anything there?
Well, the university has gone on record saying they're interested in purchasing it. And on the August 26th board meeting, the board has resolutions for Lincoln, for the sale of the Lincoln property by owner. So, the board will be putting that up for sale. They also are going to do Riff Road. Cheryl, Riff Road was our location.
That's the property.
Yes, yes, the property for the school. And they're also going to look at putting that up for sale. Because I think the community, the board, has obviously reviewed the results of the referendum and feels the community has spoken fairly clearly. And boards of education are not in the real estate business in the sense of, you know, holding on to land for a long time. So, I think the board is, they're at least going to consider it. I don't know the way the vote will go, but they're going to consider it. So, the Green Meadow location, they haven't made a decision yet.
Okay. Well, since you brought up the referendum, you know, I was going to bring this up later on, but let's, let's just go there. The school district, the Board of Education, you know, in April, the voters said, "We won't approve two items, but we will approve you to exceed the levy in order to do deferred maintenance."
Yes.
Now, you're doing deferred maintenance, but the board has not done what the voters said they wanted us to do, or, you know, the district to do. And as a result of that, yes, the maintenance is getting done. But all these other cuts had to be suffered, if you will.
That's exactly the truth. When, and I think the board looked at it as, in April, when the voters went to the polls, they, just as the board, and no one had any idea that the district would end up having to cut another $2 million-plus dollars on top of the $2.2. So, as they debated, and they did debate mightily, to decide, what do we do? When we went to referendum, we told the voters, "You still would have a mill rate that would be under $8." Well, with the way the budget, the biennial budget has worked out, it would have not been under $8. The amount would have been, well, like $8.30 or $8.36. So, the board struggled with, okay, here's what we said. Will our voters understand that the rules kind of changed in midstream? You know, from the time you said yes to us, to the time we're going to be certifying a budget, the governor has intervened and we can't, you know, if we tax, we'd be taxing about 12.54% more for every local taxpayer. And the board didn't want to do that. So, what they determined to do is, they studied very carefully. We had, oh, we had options upon options for them to reduce. Studied them carefully and said, "All right, what, what can we, what can I as an individual board member, my conscience, what can I live with?" And they looked at raising from the 12.54% to 9%, maybe just 6% or 4%, you know? So, they had a lot of choice. With the way the vote went, is that they decided to raise about 6%, raise taxes 6%. But of that 6%, 3.26% of that is the $1.3 million for deferred maintenance. So, they, as they spoke, talked through their comments, and I don't want to misrepresent them, but my, what I recall is that they still wanted to meet the community's wish to take care of that deferred maintenance. It's absolutely top priority. They couldn't bring themselves to taxing to that maximum amount. So, instead, there were, you know, a couple million dollars' worth of cuts in order to get there, which it was a very tough decision for them. And it's, and it'd be interesting to see how the community would react, because there might be some community members who would say, you know, "Just because the rules changed, you know, I still don't want you to go above that $8 mark, because your promise..." And it's true. When I was going around talking, I had given a number that was well below $8 when this passed. But they were in a difficult spot.
Well, yeah. And, you know, and I appreciate they're trying to be good stewards of our tax dollars. But on the other hand, you know, the taxpayers overwhelmingly said, "This is what we will allow you to do." And I've heard complaints from people in, you know, day-to-day conversations with folks who are not happy with some of these very deep cuts that have been made. And had they done what the voters said will allow you to do, or at least a portion thereof, maybe these cuts wouldn't have had to have been made. And some of these folks wouldn't be complaining.
It wouldn't be quite as deep. If they would have taxed to 9%, we wouldn't have had to cut quite so deep. So, you're exactly right. It was, they were absolutely looking, you know, weighing every single decision. And I can see that. Because there are people, I'm sure, who are going through registration this week, who are getting to look at schedules for their children and saying, "Oh, but I would rather have this class," only to find out that that class may not have room, because we've staffed very tightly in order to make these cuts.
Well, it seems to me, and, you know, I don't know how this all works, but it seems to me that it would have been better to not cut as much now, when you've got the permission from the voters to do this, rather than waiting until next year, or, you know, when the next biennium budget comes up. And then, if you're finding yourself in a jam, you're going to have to go back to the voters again with another referendum, because this one will be out the window at that point.
Right, right. This is just a five-year, and we're already into that first year. So, you're right, it's not forever. And there's work to be done. You know, there's always going to be work to be done. There's not only the catch-up work that we have permission for, there's new things that keep breaking down, Cheryl, believe it or not, you know?
The idea of portable classrooms had been floated for a while. I'm going back now to the school closures and so forth. Of course, that's not on the table at this point. But for those out there who, you know, had read about it or heard about it, can you just kind of explain what was being discussed there and why it's no longer on the table?
My original recommendation for closing Green Meadow had the 4th and 5th graders coming into Shapiro to go to school. And that would have meant Green Meadow would have been dissolved, basically. And those 4th and 5th graders would have been Shapiro students. Well, because of the lateness of the decision-making, the families of the students asked if we, if the board could rethink this and look at some other options. Well, one option was the Tipler location. One was South Park, because that's the feeder school. Fourth, the Green Meadow-Lakeside students do go to 6th grade at South Park. So, that, and then putting in portables was an idea that came up to try to keep the population together, the, the whole southern group population together. Well, after examining those portables and the costs, and it's so interesting, the cost, the first blush cost doesn't seem that high, but when one considers you have to have a cement slab, and you have to do plumbing, and you have to do electrical, by that time, it would have been, you might as, you wouldn't have any savings left from closing a school.
In fact, you'd be spending more money, probably.
That's true. And they're portable classrooms. And we had some very interesting reactions to that. We had some people who don't want children in portables, even though it would have kept them all together. You know, "No, I want my child to go to a school, go into a school." So, it, very interesting. So, it was a good discussion, and it was a good option to look at. It just would not, for this particular time, it wasn't a good solution. The solution was to use a district building. And I think that was a more sound, even the person who had suggested it, who was great to do some background work on it, said, "You know, I can see this. It's not going to be a great solution." So, that's how the portables came up.
All right. Communication. We touched a little bit upon, you know, how you've been communicating the school closure information. Someone approached me earlier this week about some communication that they've received from the school district with regard to school lunch programs. And he said that, I think they've gotten like three or four communications, just in this summer alone, on his daughter's school lunch program. And he's like, "Good Lord, you know, can't they just consolidate all this information into one mail and save all those postage costs and so forth?" Why the, why the multiple mailings?
School Lunch is a federally-funded program, and there are some pretty strict rules that go with those forms that need to be either filled out or not filled out, because there are some people who don't qualify, so they don't do anything. But part of what the governance, government says is, we have to make sure everyone has access to those forms. And what we're being informed of is that having them just available or sent out in a packet doesn't appear to be meeting the level of expectation for those forms. So, that's why we do that separately. We, every year, we try to get better at communication, Cheryl. It's a constant struggle, I'll tell you. And, because the rules sometimes change. And I would think sending everything in one packet, so a parent can sit down some night, you know, and fill out every form would be the best. But that's not how we're able to operate right now. But we continue to try to find out why we have, are expected to do what we do, and is there a better way to do it? We've talked about trying to do more over the internet, having more forms on the internet, so people who could access them there. And that's, you know, there are just so many other things that we would rather be doing and trying to be more green than we're being right now. So, that will be a continual struggle to keep, do better. And to meet the letter of the law, because we do appreciate the federally-funded food program.
Sure.
So, we, you know, we have to rise to the standard of their expectation.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Well, by the same token, during the school year, this gentleman said, "They don't get that much communication." Is there just not that much to communicate during the school year?
For food service, or?
For anything in general?
Well, most schools actually send home a newsletter once a month to all parents. And then teachers send home things weekly. But probably for food service, there wouldn't be. Once people are signed up, it's a simple, it's the simple, you know, put money in the student's account and kind of move on from there. But that's, you know, we keep trying to do better with the amount of paper and everything we send out, but we know there's some, there's critical information. And I do, I do read every school's newsletter, so I know there's one that goes out for the most part. You know, some don't send it every month, some do twice a month, some do just once every other month. It depends. The high school level is a little different, of course, than the other levels, so...
Now, do they, do the high schools have a newsletter as well as the school paper?
Yes, yeah. They actually have from the principal.
All right. So, no matter what the frequency is, every school has something that's going out?
Yes, going out. And then teachers have their own. Because some teachers like to send out a weekly little note on Friday, saying, "Here's what you can expect next week." And some don't. So, some try to do their website, their page on their website for people to check.
Okay, all right. Well, you're just giving me all these ins for my segue here.
Okay, good, good, good. You just mentioned the website. And, you know, I, I don't go to the district's website that often, because I don't have kids in the district. But, you know, I have gone there for information from time to time. And, you know, I know that you've been working, was it Blue Door Consulting?
Yes.
The district was working with on the website? A couple years ago, yes. And right now, I don't know if you're still working with them on that, or if it's just your IT department. But I have found the, and websites, you know, let's face it, they're always a work-in-progress. Yes. But I haven't found the website to be real user-friendly. It's, I think, difficult to navigate with certain things. And, you know, I don't know if you've heard that from other folks or not, but, and I'm trying to think of one particular example here offhand, but I can't, it escapes me right now. But, you know, have you heard this from other folks? I have. There are people who will, like, forms is a good example. There is a button on the left-hand side for forms, but it's lost in a lot of other things. And there are so many times that someone will call and say, "I'd like to fill out the in-district transfer form." Or, and we'll say, "Well, it's, it's on the website, it's on the website." If we don't take that next step and say, "Look at the left-hand side and look for the word 'forms,'" it's, it's hard to find. Because when you get on that website, you think, "Okay, you know, it says district information, school information." Well, it's not there, it's over here. And so, I have heard that, Cheryl. And I've heard sometimes that when people get to schools, our school pages aren't necessarily uniform, in the sense of every page doesn't have exactly the same thing. And so, if you're used to dealing, like, at an elementary level, you're used to dealing with that school, and then you move on to the middle school, and that, you always could find the information, and now you can't. So, yes, there are some questions. And of course, our IT director has resigned to take a job, a new position in another community. So, this is, you know, we're at a, but you know, it's always the perfect storm. These things are coming together, it's a wonderful opportunity for him. And maybe that's also kind of an opportunity for us to say, "Okay, now is the time to look at what we need and maybe look at a consultant or someone to help us through this period." And that website would be a great project to be more user-friendly. And, you know, it's important to have people who aren't school employees to talk to about this, because as a school employee, you know, you get on there and you figure your way, and you don't even think about what it's like for someone who's not an employee, who's using it often. So, that would be a nice focus group, to get a few people together to say...
Are you reading my notes?
No, I wasn't, I wasn't. Maybe I could do a show like this.
That's exactly what, that's exactly what I had on here, you know?
Did you?
Yeah, because it is true. I mean, when, when you work with it day in and day out, you just know where to click and how to find what you're looking for. For someone who maybe goes on it once a month, once every three or four months, you know, you're sitting there kind of struggling a little bit. And so, I did write down focus groups, you know? And someone who doesn't work within the district, you know? Maybe some parents, or whatever.
And some of the greatest feedback I've gotten are from people who are looking to move into the district, who have children, who are wondering, you know, questions about the district, and struggle, struggle to find a phone number to call, or, I mean, and that's, that is not good, because that is our marketing tool, as you well know. Just like our buildings are our marketing tools, and our staff, obviously, are our marketing people, you know? But if you're outside there wanting to move in, you're outside moving in, you, that is probably the first place you go nowadays.
Well, here's what you could do. You've got a newsletter that goes out from every school.
Yes.
The principals could write a little blurb in their newsletter that it goes home to the kids. And maybe their parents could just get on, you know, the website and just, just try to find something in particular, you know? And then they could send the district feedback on how easy it was to find it or not.
And Cheryl, there's a feedback form on there, but that may not be easy to find.
Because you guys don't want the feedback, right?
We actually do it. I do get some, and I appreciate people who will find it and type in and give me some good, some really good advice, or some good questions come in. But that would be great. Or call, call the office, 424-0160. I'm very happy to get that information, because I am well-aware that being someone who uses it a lot, I sort of get like rounded edges, and I look right past things that really need to be addressed.
Well, that's like anything. You know, when you work with something day in and day out, it just becomes second nature. But for the occasional user, it, it's more difficult and sometimes more challenging. And, you know, frankly, I think the city's website is, you know, I know that they've made progress and changes, and it is ever-changing, and a work-in-progress all the time. But, you know, that's sometimes hard to navigate too, you know? And when you've got IT people doing it, that, I think, is probably even worse, you know?
Because they're so good, yes.
Because they just, you know, they've got blinders on, and they just, they just know how to get from point A to point B anyway. We're starting to run out of time here, but I wanted to talk a little bit about your position. Now, you're an interim superintendent, you know, and you've been here now, what, about a year?
September 2nd, I expected.
Yeah, so, you know, you're getting your feet very wet. You had them very wet right from the start. Where is the, you know, the permanent superintendent search at right now?
In the first meeting in September, which will be the 9th, the board is having a workshop with the Hazard, Young, and Ataya Group, who is the group that actually owes the board a search, because that's kind of how the, the process works. And so, that the representatives will be meeting with the board and putting together that very important calendar, you know, of when things get posted and when information should come back. And the board will set up its calendar, so that it's able to set up its interview sessions for the candidates. And I think the timing is actually pretty good, because as October, as we come into October, that's when a lot of superintendents who maybe are retiring announce, and so people who might be looking for new positions start looking about that time. So, if it's posted out there in November, I think the board should have a very good opportunity for early in the 2010 school year to have a decision made, which is, that will be good. It'll be great for the community and great for the board.
Yeah. Now, how long does your current contract go for?
I actually am on a, almost a day-by-day, Cheryl. I have, I have a commitment to the board for this next school year, but there's a 15-day out clause. So, if by chance, they would decide, "Well, you know, we want to, instead, pick someone from the inside who could get started January 1st," then that, we would sever our relationship at that point. So, we tried to set that up to be as, easy to, you know, talk about user-friendly, to be as user-friendly as possible, so that the board would be able to move forward quickly. I, like I said, I think it's important to, this job is, it's critical, I think, as far as trying to provide that focus and momentum to keep moving forward. And so, I'm anxious for them to have who they would like to have do it.
And what will Betty Lang do then?
Probably go back to retirement, Cheryl. I had six weeks of retirement, and probably go back. And, you know, I have to say, though, I am always open for options. I have just, Oshkosh is a wonderful place. I've enjoyed every minute of it. The people are great. And I just think, you know, we, we've done some very difficult things, and that sometimes happens. And sometimes it happens best with an interim, because then the new person coming in has an opportunity to pick up and move everyone forward with some of those things that were lingering, you know, having been done. So, yeah, you, but, you know, might find me someplace else. You never know, Cheryl.
Well, I don't have a show somewhere else that I can have you on. So, just real quickly, you know, a lot has kind of been made on some of the blogs about some of the absentee board members from some, from some of these more recent special meetings that haven't held. You know, and in their defense, I mean, I don't know what their reasons are for not being there, but I can't imagine they just said, "Heh, I don't want to go." But, you know, there have been a lot of special meetings called, and they're being called during the daytime.
Yes.
And, you know, everybody, I think everybody on the board works. I don't think there's anyone retired on the board right now. You know, do you know the reasons why some of these board members haven't been there lately?
Some have been childcare reasons, some have been work reasons, work-related, that they have standing appointments or things set up. And we have had quite a rash of special meetings. That's a little unusual, usually. And unfortunately, sometimes the amount of time they were given, lead time they were given, was very difficult for them to drop everything and be there. And we also have had people on vacation, you know, pre-planned vacations where they're out of town. So that's been a complication for them. And I haven't, like I said, this has been an unusual year. And it's also been unusual in that realm of special meetings. And typically you try to give at least three or four days. Here sometimes we had people barely getting two days' notice to try to turn. And noon seems to be, when my assistant looks for time, she tries to find a common, you know, the most common time, noon seemed to be more popular than five or six o'clock at night because so many people have activities with their children and it's summer. So that's, I have never, no one has said, Cheryl, no, I won't come. You know, it's, they have all had something going and we've had people arrive late because they tried to finish what they had going. Like for example, the city council hosted a meeting last, a workshop that the board was invited to. We had a couple of people come in a little late because they freed themselves up from something else. And so it's, yeah, they always, almost always make their regularly scheduled meetings. They totally have those blocked out and they're ready to go. It's just, those special meetings are a challenge.
Well, and the one with the city, wasn't that called with like a day and a half, two days' notice?
That was very short. And we actually had six board members able to clear their calendars to be there. So it was great.
All right, excellent. Well, Betty, as always, thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
You're always a wealth of information and I'm going to let you dash so you can get off to your next commitment.
My next event, yes. Thank you, Cheryl. Thanks for having me.
You're welcome. Just sit tight and we're going to take a real short break. When we come back, we'll be joined by Tony Palmieri from the Oshkosh Common Council. We'll be right back.
Dear Mom and Dad, well, I finally have some time off, so I'm writing to tell you that I'm doing well. We have good days and bad days over here. We try to remember the good ones and get through the bad ones. Mostly we have each other and that's what keeps us going. And Mom, since you asked, if anyone wants to help, just tell them to contact the USO. You can't believe how much they do for us. With love, your son, Michael.
Every year, the US Department of the Treasury receives about 1.4 million reports of problems with paper checks. Checks can be lost, stolen or delayed. If you still receive social security payments by paper check, Treasury wants you to know about a safer, more convenient way to get your money. The Direct Express Prepaid Debit Mastercard. The Direct Express card is new and is available to anyone receiving social security benefits, even if you don't have a bank account. Your monthly benefits will be automatically placed onto your card account each month on the day your money is due. While other debit cards cost money, it is possible to use the Direct Express card for free to make purchases, pay bills and get cash at thousands of locations nationwide. There are no sign up or monthly account fees, no more waiting for the mail or worrying about lost or stolen checks. Call 1-877-212-9991 or visit www.usdirectexpress.com.
We were in an emergency situation. We don't have extra. We have a little bit of water and a little bit of food. A meeting in place, no.
No.
I don't think we have a first aid kit.
We have tuna fish, we have beans, we have canned tomatoes, you know.
That's true, but that's really not survival food, tomato paste.
Yeah, well, yeah.
All right, welcome back. The second half of ION Oshkosh, Tony Palmieri from the Oshkosh Common Council is here now and going to talk about a whole plethora of issues and try and cram them into the next 30 minutes. So even though Dan's not here tonight, he sent some questions for me and I want to try and get those in. But the first thing, we were just talking at the end there with Betty about the joint meeting that was held as we're taping this last night with the school district and the common council. Now, that was about a, considering a proposal for the city to acquire three parcels of land from the school district.
Correct.
I mean, you guys need to start construction as soon as you can on a detention pond.
Right.
And they need to, oh, let's see, they need to move its buildings and grounds department out of their flood damaged current location as soon as possible. Apparently though, what was talked about didn't really provide adequate solutions. Is that, I mean, that's kind of what I got from the newspaper.
The Oshkosh Common Council, after the August 11th meeting, met in closed executive session where we heard a proposal that had been negotiated for quite a while, I believe, between the city manager, the public works director of Oshkosh and the planning folks over in the school district, including Betty, I believe. And they came up with this plan that the city of Oshkosh would purchase these three parcels. Some of us in the closed meeting at the Oshkosh Common Council were uncomfortable because it appeared as if, A, the taxpayers would be purchasing a property on Campbell Road that they already own, a flood damage building. And I think we'd pay something like $400,000 for it. And B, there's been all this talk over the last, well, 10 years in the state about consolidation, about units of government working together. And some of us thought, maybe we should look into the idea of creating a joint facility on the Campbell Road site. The administration didn't seem all that open to the discussion. And I think that's when Mayor Esslinger decided to take the bull by the horns, if you will, and call this, this, this open meeting. Another part of this, Cheryl, though, is that, you know, we've just been through this visioning process where even though no one has formally approved the visioning report, everyone seems to be giving lip service to the idea that whenever we plan anything now, we should at least see how it jibes with some of these ideas and visioning. And you know, it seems like that site on Campbell Road, Whitsel and Campbell, if you will, might be a kind of area where you might want some commercial development. So it just seemed to make sense to at least air this out a bit more and see if we can come up with some other solutions. A fellow named Will Rasmussen, who apparently worked for Oshkosh Sanitation for 17 years, came to this open meeting and he's got a proposal for the school district and the city to move their facilities to Farnell.
Oh, out off Jackson.
Yeah, and he's been, he's been studying this, I'm not exactly sure where the site is, but he's been studying this for a long time. He thinks it makes sense. We had never heard about this. And also I found out at this meeting, the open meeting, that the city of Oshkosh proposal was based on a 1998 study of our facility needs that, I've never seen that study.
Wow.
So it just seemed like the open meeting that we had, even though I don't think it resolved anything or really made as much headway as I would have liked, it did serve the purpose of giving us much greater transparency in this. So we know there are other ideas on the table and we now know about this 1998 report, which Mr. Roloff will now send to every council member so we can at least see it.
So where does this go from here?
Well, my understanding is that the administration will bring to the common council at our September 8th meeting, the proposal that was brought to us in our closed session, unchanged. At the open meeting, I tried to suggest that the city should purchase the two parcels that would allow for the construction of the detention ponds because that's vital.
Yeah.
And that we should hold off on the purchase of the building until we can air out these other ideas. There did not seem to be widespread support for that. So if that's going to happen, then the common council at its September 8th meeting will have to either vote down the proposal or try and amend it.
Okay. Want to talk about the grand.
Yes.
I don't want to spend a lot of time on it because by the time this show airs, it will probably be, you know, it'll probably only air one time before you guys vote on this. You're going to vote it on, vote on it on the 25th. So this will air on the 24th and then a few times after that. But so, but let's touch on it anyway. Now, of course, you know, some service groups and private organizations have come up with additional monies to help fund these, these repairs at the grand. Is that making you lean any more toward approving this?
Yeah, although it's been kind of odd to me that I think I've been made to be one of the bad guys in this, telling the service groups.
You and Paul Esslinger both.
Yeah, in spite of the fact though, who do you think wrote this? We got, we got an email from the service groups saying, you know, fund the grand, put the taxpayer money. And then a member of the Oshkosh Common Council emailed them back and said, "To be sure that the job on the opera house gets done correctly will require all of us to step up." So my question is, if the city commits to some substantial dollars, will the organizations be willing to help in raising some of the funds? That was Burke Tower. And I thought he was right on target. And I think that that needs to be said. But quite frankly, Cheryl, it seems to me there are two issues here. One is the immediate need of fixing the trusses, the roof, what have you. The other, the other issue is how do we guarantee the long-term viability of the grand? I don't think the current model of ownership is going to do it. It seems to me, in my study of this issue, with the city owning the facility, the inclination seems to be to look the other way on building repairs. I mean, and my view on this, by the way, has been shaped on all this insurance carrier madness that we've had over the last two years. Because what we've learned in all of that madness is that the city is not really motivated to find substantial issues that we could be liable for. So now, it seems to me that the trust issue, does anyone honestly think that the trusses only started to be a problem in this year?
No, I'm sure they didn't. But here would be the motivator for the city to, you know, look for some of these issues or to make repairs as they go along. And that's, now we're sitting here with a lot of cost.
Yeah.
You know, whereas everything is more palatable if it comes in smaller packages, you know, than a couple of million dollars or a million and a half or whatever it is, you know, if you can do a couple hundred thousand here.
Well.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes, but here's.
And so I would think that that would be the motivator.
The city, the city gives 65,000 a year to the Grand Opera House. The Opera House Foundation also receives a substantial amount of dollars from the hotel motel room tax. It probably adds up to about 100 and, I don't know, 150,000 per year, something like that. That's tax money. I mean, realistically, how much tax dollars can go toward the facility in an era when we've got needs on roads, streets, parks, libraries, the whole nine yards? Now, I've, I've looked at, there are about five or six other historic opera houses in the state that are roughly similar to the grand, older, early 20th century, late 19th century opera houses. None of them have the ownership model that we have. In fact, I've talked to people in these cities that say to me, how do you guys get away with that? Because generally in the healthier facilities, you have something like the Grand Opera House Foundation, together with a group that we might call Friends of the Grand Opera House or something like that, that becomes, the city could sell it to them for a dollar. They are then responsible for raising the lion's share of, of funds. I think, Cheryl, if we don't start moving in that direction, to use the common buzzword, this model we have in place is just not sustainable. The 65,000 a year is not going to be enough. I, I don't think anyone honestly believes that if we fix the trusses, which I hope we do, that that's going to be the end of maintenance for the grand.
Right.
Right? This is going to be a long list of, of, of maintenance issues. So I think we need to start at least having a serious discussion of how to change the model that we're working under here.
Selling it perhaps?
I would, I personally would sell it to the Grand Opera House Foundation for a dollar and allow them to take on total responsibility for raising money, which by the way, is still a public-private partnership.
Well, it is. But in the meantime, before that happens, I mean, the city does own it, whether it's a working model or not. The city does own it. The lease agreement says that the city will maintain the building.
Right.
And I mean, as, as landlord, I couldn't just say to my tenants, you know what, it should be my responsibility, but you go ahead and you fix that roof if it's, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
I mean, it just seems like the city does have a responsibility to, to take care of the repairs, to get it done, even though we have other things that, that need repair. Infrastructure needs to be updated, you know. I mean, we're pulled, our dollars are being pulled in a lot of different directions.
We are pulled.
But you know, right now, it is what it is.
Right. And I think the fact that Gordon Hints was able to get us $500,000 from the state
Yeah.
was evidence that he and others realize this can't just be local tax dollars.
Right.
In fact, here's another thing. Again, I've become heavy on this. I already read you Burke's email. When Gordon got the, the 500,000, he, on his own blog, I guess you'd call it, he wrote, "City taxpayers footed the bill for the sprinklers and the community will certainly contribute more, public and private dollars, before this is all over." So then all of a sudden, when I and the mayor started calling for, and Burke, I guess, started calling for more private dollars, all of a sudden it became controversial. This has been called for from the beginning.
Well, but maybe what they've been referring to, and I don't know because this is the first I've heard that, but maybe what they've been referring to is the private dollars that are already going to help the grand as opposed to upping the ante now.
Right, largely for programming, from what we've been told. And you know, programming is, is fine, but it looks like, to me, it's not unreasonable to expect that private dollars would come forward to help with this significant repair bill. I'm really, really thrilled by the response we got from John Daimel of Glass Nickel Pizza.
Yeah.
He's been listening to this discussion. He wants to start a movement called Raise a Grand for the Grand in which he's trying to get as many businesses as possible to pledge to raising a thousand bucks for the grand.
Right.
I spoke to the folks who run the Thrasher Opera House in Green Lake. It's a facility smaller than the Grand Opera House, but a historic Grand Opera House. They have an incredible network of small businesses that keep that facility going. Not one dime of taxpayer dollars and no hotel motel room tax money goes to that facility. You'll find that around the state. Oshkosh in 1990 adopted a way of doing this that isn't sustainable and has resulted, I believe, in, in this deferred maintenance. And we need to find some model that makes sure that we don't have to go through these lengths of waiting until there's a crisis before the building gets repaired. And I, you know, I think the public ownership model of this facility is just not going to work for us. That's my view.
Yeah.
The council may disagree.
So now that others have stepped up, will you be voting to approve these repairs then?
Yeah, I want to listen to the whole discussion. I was a little bit disappointed because when we got the, the memo from the Opera House Foundation, they're talking about putting a surcharge in place. Well, that apparently was going to be done anyway to help to build out, to build their lounge area. And essentially what they are telling us now is, well, you want us to use this $250,000 toward rebuilding the, the trusses, but that means we can't use it toward the lounge anymore. And I was seeing those as two separate issues here. So I am leaning towards supporting it, but I'm, I'm more likely to support it if there's a serious discussion and I'm hoping even a commitment toward transferring, transferring ownership at some point soon. And that way, the opera house does not have to be in competition with roads, streets, police, library, parks, sewage, nameless. The, the successful opera houses around the state are not put in that position.
You know, I don't know if the grand is equipped for this, but I, I read, I forget where this is. There, there is some city and state that has an opera house and they actually show movies there.
Yeah.
You know, now we've got these, you know, movies in the park in the summer. Why not carry it on year round?
Well, Joe, Joe Furlough has shown movies in the.
Has he?
Yeah, in fact, I've been a guest commentator.
But he could do it all the time. You know, he could do it all the time.
Yeah.
And, and I think this place charged like four or five dollars and.
Yeah, and let me say, Cheryl, it's been really difficult for me to be a dissenter on this because in Mr. Furlough, we have probably the most talented artistic director in the state. Jeff Potts, who's their outreach guy, is a former student of mine. I mean, these are high quality people. I want to see the grand survive and thrive well into the future. And the point I've been trying to make is that based on my study of this, what we have been doing will not guarantee the long-term viability of that facility. So I want to see a real discussion of how to do things differently.
Okay. I just know we're not going to get to everything that I have on the list or all of Dan's questions. But dogs in the park. Now, you and Mr. Esslinger want to see a referendum, I guess.
Advisory.
Yeah, and, and I've got an issue with that, Tony. If, if you guys are so concerned about doing the public's bidding on this, then why not make it binding? Why make it advisory? Because I, I think it's pretty clear that Esslinger is not in favor of it. I'm not sure if it's that cut and dried with you. But if you, if you want to see where the public stands on it, make it binding.
Well, I personally would not have a problem with a binding referendum. I don't think we have four votes on the council for a binding referendum, number one. And you know, number two, if we're, if we are going to have a binding referendum, then I think we need to work very, very hard to make sure the language of the referendum clearly specifies what we're trying to accomplish. So for example, would it mean, for example, there would be some people who have no problem at all with people taking their dog to Menominee Park on a leash, staying on a trail. Other people want to see the dogs able to run all over the park. If you're going to have a binding referendum, you'd better be absolutely crystal clear as to what, as to what you want.
Because if they want them running everywhere, they, they can go to the dog park.
Right, exactly, exactly. So I mean, I'm not, I'm not completely opposed to the idea of a binding referendum. I think that when we, assuming I do come forward with something, I think we will have a debate on the council, whether it should be binding or, or advisory.
Yeah.
The feeling I got, Cheryl, from my fellow counselors was that there wasn't support for a binding. But I could be wrong on that. It may be that people do want the binding.
Advisory referendums, I mean, so the public tells the council what they want and the council's still going to end up doing what it wants to do anyway. I mean, if they really want to have some, if they really want to put their money where their mouths are, they should make it binding and be done with it. You know, there are state parks, state parks, dogs are allowed in state parks.
I know.
There's, there's one that somebody even told me of a state park where there's a beach where the dogs can swim. I don't know exactly where that is, but you know, it just seems like Oshkosh is really behind the times here with this.
Well, here's the way I was, have been looking at it. I've got a lot of mixed feelings and you know, it's one of those issues where you get passionate people on all sides. If we did an advisory referendum and if, I'm setting the bar at 60%. If 60% or more said dogs in the park, I would be inclined to definitely support dogs in the park. If 60% or more said no dogs in park, I would not be inclined to support it. So that's why an advisory referendum would be very useful to me and would inform my vote.
But the other council members aren't going to necessarily feel that same way.
Um, I don't, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, I guess we won't know until we get the, get the results in. I know there are a lot of passionate people on all sides and I, you know, I try to be very sympathetic to all sides because I can tell you, for me personally, I was terrified of dogs until I was in my mid 30s and finally became a dog owner. Then, once I became a dog owner, Pugsley.
Pugsley, yeah.
Then I totally, rest in peace, he passed away a few years ago. But then I became a dog lover. So being though I was terrified of dogs for that long in my life, I'm completely sympathetic to people who say, look, if I see a dog in a park, I'm not going to go in the park, I'm terrified.
Well, and are they saying that they're not going to go out in their yard then if somebody walks down the street on the sidewalk? I mean.
Yeah, there, well, I do think if we had an advisory refer, even if it was just advisory, we could have that kind of public forum debate. And I think that would be helpful to have.
Well, if you're going to do a referendum, whether it's advisory or binding, why not also then kind of poll people in a referendum on the deer culling? Because I know you've been a very huge proponent about, you know, getting the public's opinion that, that the public at large. That the public at large hadn't really been surveyed on this deer calling thing.
You know, it's interesting you say that because I don't know if all counselors received it, but I recently received a letter from a woman who lives out at Evergreen who wants the city to start deer calling out there because there are deer, you know, behind the Evergreen Retirement Complex, and she claims that her hostas have been destroyed and that people are afraid for their safety and so on. So it looks like deer, as I've been saying, deer are not just a quarry armory issue. Deer are all over the city of Oshkosh. I would definitely support having that on a ballot. Now, I don't know, we have some members of the council who I think believe the ballot is sacred, and they may not even vote to put an advisory dog referendum on, I don't know. But yeah, I would love to see that on there.
Well, I mean, you know, and again, you're not always going to get, you still, because of the apathetic voters out there, you're not, well, I don't even know that we can call them voters because of the apathy out there. You're still not going to get 100% of the people's opinion, but at least you'll get some.
Well, I know you don't want to talk about the deer calling that much, but I don't know if you saw what happened in Sheboygan.
Yes.
They have there a committee, roughly equivalent to what I'm trying to create here or help to create here, some kind of urban wildlife committee, fully researched the issue, fully informed. They have more deer than Oshkosh, and yet their common council ended up voting 12 to 1 not to deer cull.
You know, I'm glad you brought that up because there's another bone I got to pick with you, Tony.
Okay.
Speaking of dogs and stuff, a bone.
Okay, we've got dogs, deer, is this another animal issue?
Well, it's kind of, it goes back to the dog thing. I mean, you're always so good about researching stuff and putting on your.
Trying to.
Yeah, well, when you've got time.
Yeah.
And putting on your blog all this stuff that you've found.
Right.
You have not yet put one thing on there about dogs being allowed in parks and how popular this is in so many other places.
Oh.
And I thought, well, you know, Tony, come on.
I will make it a point to do that.
All right, excellent. That's excellent. Thank you for that. Oh, boy, I don't even know where to go next here. One of Dan's questions had to do with representative government.
Yeah.
Well, actually, we kind of already touched on that, so that's part of the dog issue again. Council vacancy.
Hmm.
He said, "Why hasn't the procedure used by the common council and pushed by you become," this was for bringing Harold Buckholz on board.
Right.
"And pushed by you become part of the city statutes? If it was acceptable on this vacancy, shouldn't it be used in future ones?"
You know, I have.
Is there any movement toward that?
I have not had the chance yet, with all the other issues we're dealing with, to move on that, but before this term is up, I would like to move on that because what we did in that process was very similar to almost every other city in Wisconsin that had a vacancy on their council over the last few years. Now, my, I haven't done complete research on this, but my understanding is Green Bay has it in their statutes, a process very similar to the one that we used. I'd have no problem putting in the statutes. I thought it was a fair process. I thought it worked very well. I think Mr. Buckholz has demonstrated that he's a very talented, thoughtful, high-quality individual.
I think he's doing an excellent job.
Very qualified to be there.
And he's going to be on here next month.
Is he? Very qualified to be there. So I realize it was clumsy, I realize it was contentious, but I thought that the Northwestern's argument to simply take the runner-up was, it would have been easy for us.
Mm-hmm.
Very little work, avoid being bashed in the press, but I think it would have been a very dangerous precedent to set. So I'm content with what we did.
Well, I'm content with him.
Right.
I think he is, I agree. He's done a very fine job, and I look forward to him coming on, so I can tell him that. But I guess, you know, in an interview process, there's questions.
Absolutely.
And you guys didn't, seven of you sitting up there, or six of you, asked not one single question. How do you have an interview process when there's no questions?
Well.
I mean, it almost gives people the impression, Tony, that the decisions were made when you walked into that room that night.
Well, I think the way the rules were set up, they were told to prepare a present statement and then present to the council.
Yeah.
You know, that's a good question. I personally thought that whatever questions I would have had were answered by them in their statements. I mean, that's essentially where I was coming from. But yeah, look, let's put it this way. I think I was clear. My first preference would have been for special election.
Yeah.
That's always my first preference. But not cost-effective. This, I thought, was the best second alternative. But yeah, I could see why people would be frustrated by not having more questions there. We would have been there probably till 5:00 in the morning.
Well, and you know what also surprised me was that, I mean, the public had an opportunity to ask questions.
Yeah.
And not a single person from the public asked any questions either.
Well, part of that, Cheryl, was I thought that almost every person who got up there that night gave a very excellent presentation, told clearly who they were, why they wanted to be on the council. It reaches a point where you're not really sure what to ask them. I mean, I certainly wasn't going to select someone based on their agreement with me on issues, so I thought it was inappropriate to try and peg, "Okay, so how do you feel? Do you agree with me on the dogs in the park?" I mean, then it would be trying to pick an ideological equal.
Yeah, yeah.
And I didn't think that was really right. So as I had said before that meeting, I was looking for someone of demonstrated high character and integrity who had some passion for the job. I thought Harold demonstrated that.
Yeah, I think he's just doing a very, very fine job. We've only got a couple minutes left, Tony, but let's talk about O'Briens.
Yeah.
Because, you know, that was a disappointing vote.
Yes, it was.
You didn't disappoint me on that vote, though. You and Burke Tower were the only two on that council who, you know, wanted to see that license taken away from that bar.
Right.
Five other people thought differently, and those people still have their liquor license, and now we've just had another situation that the Northwestern reported on where somebody was pistol-whipped.
Yeah.
Outside the bar.
Disgusting.
I think there's some question, at least on the Northwestern's blog, there's some question about, you know, exactly where the incident took place.
Right.
And now Police Chief Groyle is looking at a demerit-type system, which is used by other communities. You know, let's talk about that since the rest is history and our time's limited. You know, have you had a chance to research demerit systems?
I think we're going to do a workshop on it.
Where do you stand?
We're going to do a workshop on it. I think they work in other communities. I think Oshkosh has been overly tolerant on abuses of liquor licenses. I thought we had a golden opportunity to show that we're committed, not just to being strict with the liquor licenses, but to showing we're committed to downtown.
Yeah.
I mean, as someone who lives a minute away from Main Street, I know it can get pretty scary to walk in a place where you know that this kind of stuff is going on.
Yeah.
And so I thought we owed it to the population, especially in that area, to say we're serious about public safety. The chief went out of his way to build a case. I mean, for me, the most telling thing was the fact that the fellow told, are we running out of time here?
Yeah, very quickly.
Okay. Well, hopefully we'll get another chance to deal with that license soon.
All right.
And others, too.
Good, excellent. Tony, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Deputy Mayor Palmieri, and thanks to Betty Lang for being on in the first half hour. That's going to do it for us. Thanks to the crew and to our guests and to you at home. We'll see you next time. Until then, take good care. Keep your eye on us, we've got our eye on Oshkosh.